Good evening. I'd like to call to order this budget workshop for the Borough Council, for the Borough of Gettysburg, for November 3rd, 2025. We do still hold tomorrow night as a potential meeting time should we go long tonight, but I fully expect us to conclude this business tonight. Next Monday, the 10th, council will vote to advertise this draft budget. On Wednesday, the 19th, the draft budget will be posted for public review. And then on Monday, December 8th, council will have its normal business meeting where we would vote to adopt this budget. Before we get into the rest of the agenda, I would be remiss if I didn't take a minute here and address the loss of one of our own. People who watch these meetings regularly will note that this seat has been empty for a really long time. You probably saw Judy's obituary last week. And I wanted to read a statement about my friend. And there is zero chance I'll make it through dry-eyed, so bear with me. "Six years ago, when I was first seated on council, I was down at the end, seated next to someone I had little to no knowledge of. Judy Butterfield was an 80-year-old Southern Republican, and I was a bleeding-heart San Francisco liberal, and I fully expected her, Wes Heiser, and John Lawver to be difficult, argumentative, and ideologically driven. And in retrospect, that is exactly how I would now describe myself at the time. I was quickly disabused of the notion, as all three of these folks showed me with their every word and deed, that they were reasonable, attentive, deliberative, and most of all, kind people. In our first challenge as a team, we were attempting to craft the language that we would adopt to expand legal protections in the borough to folks that the state had left behind through our human relations ordinance. Judy sat silently for an hour or more as we deliberated, and then when she finally did raise her hand to speak, I thought, oh, man, here it comes. She stated that if we were going to be using the council's time and the taxpayers' money to pay lawyers to draft this new ordinance, we had damn well better take our time and make sure we got it right and to make sure that we left no one behind this time." And that, to me, was Judy. This was my first time realizing that I had to visit my biases and have an open mind, and that's the first lesson Judy taught me. It was not the last. "Over the subsequent years, through the pandemic and recovery, through BLM and George Floyd, through ARPA, turmoil, and more late nights than I can count, Judy was always there counseling thoughtful and respectful dialogue, collegiality above all, and to always keep the best interests of the borough at heart." Always, she wanted us to be making progress, moving forward. Judy, the self-styled queen of trash, is renowned for her involvement with our waste programs, but the truth of the matter is, I don't think she thought too much about it until she realized that we were leaving money on the table in state rebates by not mandating recycling. And so she took it upon herself to make sure programs were in place so that the borough got everything it was due. She knew full well that there are people in this community to whom every penny matters. This is the second thing she taught me. When there is work to be done, you do it. Over the next several years, she and I were a very close team. We took on organizational and managerial tasks that needed done, even if they took hundreds of hours. We were the go-tos for work that needed done that our staff, who are always stretched too thin, just, they could not take it on. If there is work to do, you do it." And she also said to me, "If not us, then who?" Judy did not suffer fools, but she was never cruel. That Southern bless-your-heart came through over and again with difficult employees and stubborn people who would not ever cooperate, but she was always kind. Then, when it was just us in the room, she would start her swearing, but I promise you that the most polite set of curses you have ever heard. I might drop an MF from time to time, and she would only laugh. She taught me that you don't publicly embarrass people, even when they are woefully underperforming or uninformed. She never met a person she couldn't find the good in. She never shied away from work. She cared deeply and put her money where her mouth was. The last thing she would ever want is this, that I am doing right now, honoring her for things that simply gave her joy. But I don't know how to do this job without talking about how thoroughly wonderful she was. Her illness kept her away from us for almost a year, and I missed her every day. She was one of my best and truest friends I've met since moving here. She lived a life of service and took her role as a military wife as serious as she could. She was called to service. But, too, in the midst of all this, she also enjoyed a 65-year love story with John, raised a family, and passed on so much to so many. We should all be so lucky to have enjoyed a life so well-lived, and I really miss her. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say about Judy before we move on?
Yeah, I would like to say... She's gonna be so hard to replace. I don't think the public knows how tirelessly she worked, how diligent, how thoughtful. She's a quintessential public servant, and there's just gonna be tough shoes to fill. I had a really wonderful opportunity eight years ago. Just so happened that our ward election site was over at the Charlie Steiner Building, and both Judy and I were running, and we just happened to be standing there, and we got to know each other. And it was the beginning of a very good friendship, and I have to echo everything that Matt says. She was just a kind, wonderful, lovely person, and I'm gonna miss her dearly.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? You don't have to.
Sure. It is hard to imagine this council without Judy Butterfield. She was one of the kindest, warmest, and most compassionate people I've ever met. From the beginning, Judy offered her wisdom and insight on local government and remained committed to ensuring members put politics aside for the sake of the common good. In her time on council, she elevated the level of public trust and made us all better people. May her light shine on in all of us.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Matt, if I could, I think one thing, too, that people, they've seen her up here for years as an elected official, but Judy worked tirelessly for 30-plus years behind the scenes. You could come into council, the municipal hall, and find her stuffing envelopes, putting together stapling newsletters. Whatever needed to be done, she, she did it. She never shied away from hard work. And it was always, as Matt said, she, she never suffered fools. So she knew what was, what was the skinny, but if you had the privilege of, of going to lunch with Judy, when she summoned you to lunch, you know, and she would daintily pull out of her purse her hot sauce to put on whatever she was eating at the time, whether it was an omelet, or her soup, or a sandwich. So she was always full of surprises, and, and as my colleagues have said, she, she really will be missed.
Anybody else?
I think it was already said that Judy, in addition to being a councilperson, was also a liaison to many of our committees, if you will, groups, and her huge effort, efforts annually for recycling. But in addition to the work that she did on council, as many of us know, for years and years and years, she has been an active member, past, past board member and volunteer for the Adams County Arts Council, which does incredible work for this county. She will be missed greatly. It is a huge loss.
I would like to say, she was a rarity in today's world, a lady, and a strong woman. She did what she believed in. She worked hard. She was very active in the community. She took people under her wings and taught them. But I would just like to say, that's a rarity in today's world, is a strong lady, and I will miss her.
If y'all join me in a moment of silence, I'd like to just give a little space to Judy's memory here. Thank you, everybody. I would never speak for her family, but for her, I will say, and I don't know what these words mean, "Go Auburn." Did I get that right?
Poor ego, I think.
Thank you all. An executive session was held by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of its Monday, October 27th, 2025, 2026 budget work session, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's 2026 budget work session meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide updated information and to discuss matters involving the employment and appointment of current or prospective borough employees, the terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation of performance of current borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or confidentiality protected by law. Is this agenda missing public comment?
It is, the first one.
Yeah. At this point, we will take public comment, if there is any. I see we have one member of the public here. All right, thank you. We'll move on. Thank you. We will continue discussing expenditures. I don't expect tonight's discussion to go on incredibly long. We have just a few funds to cover here. On the expense side, we need to talk about everything scheduled for Fund 18 capital improvements. We'll then go into Fund 30, Fund 35. And then we need to talk about revenues. That is sort of the conclusion of the, of the story here. These first revenue sections are our chance to reduce expenses before we get into how we're going to set revenues. By the end of this conversation tonight, we will have decided what money we are going to spend next year and how we're going to pay for it. The final matter of business tonight is going to be the fee resolution, wherein we set all of our fees for the following year, everything from parking to towing to permitting, et cetera. Please take it away, Mr. Gable.
Let's start with Fund 18. This is kind of where we dump all our big projects. Most of them have fairly large budget line items, so in Department 409, which is General Government Administration, we just have some funds set aside for the next iteration of the capital improvement plan at Sony $500. In the Police Department Fund, or Department 410, we have, and I talked with Officer-in-Charge Evans earlier today on this, it is in the red box, if you will, where they are looking to install two audio and video cameras in the interview room. Would you be able to speak to the potentiality or not potentiality of the funds for that?
Yeah, so the interview room cameras, that, that was kind of a, it was brought up after the grant was, was written, so I was talking with Bill Jennings, he's with the PCD, and they're the ones that give out these grants now. The cameras for the interview room are supplemental than the cameras that were initially put into the grant, so it's gonna take some, it's gonna take some time to maybe see if we can try to amend the grant, to see if we can get that put in there. I can't guarantee that we can do that. The grant expires in December, so I'm looking to maybe get an extension to do that, but it's gonna be pretty time-consuming, so I'm gonna work with them a little bit more and see what we can do. So there's potential there, but I'm not sure how likely it's gonna be for us to be able to add that to that specific grant.
So at the end of the day, this $29,000 expenditure would, would be spent if we are successful at amending the grant. Otherwise, it's still something you could do, just know that you're gonna draw down on the reserve funds for capital projects if you do.
Right, so if we do get grant funds, it'd be a reimbursement for this expense, but if we don't get those grant funds, this would be an expense out of pocket.
Right.
So this is about $30,000. However, it is, it can also be viewed as a tool to protect the safety of our officers as well as those in their custody, opinions?
Absolutely, I agree.
I support it.
Yep. Yep.
I think it's necessary, and I think it's important.
This is for, for two cameras?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It wouldn't only be for safety, but it would be some kind of custodial record of what happened.
Yeah, so essentially what it is, it's a camera system, audio recording system in our interview room, so it interviews, you know, interviews of suspects, victims, stuff like that. There's a cloud data system that you can get also with it, where you can save these interviews to the cloud, potentially remote view it, you know, because it's also, it's web-based. So if you have somebody interviewing a victim at the station, and then maybe you have an investigator somewhere else, you know, getting, you know, real-time information, they can watch, they can actually remote in and actually review the, the interview. It's also, you know, since it's uploaded to the cloud, you're able to have access to it anywhere. You can send that information to the District Attorney's Office or another investigative agency. It's, it's a very useful tool. We're kind of antiquated the way we do things right now, not having a system like that in our interview room. Most, you know, agencies do have that type of capability, so this will kind of definitely help with our integrity of our investigations and evidentiary value, so.
Would this be, these would be additional cameras in the system we've already been sort of installing and building out through the building?
So, no, this is a separate system.
This is a completely isolated system?
It's a closed, it's a, it's not gonna be, be able to access by that, that system, specifically designed to, to have evidentiary integrity.
All right, I'm hearing pretty resounding support, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Fingers crossed on the grant.
Sure.
Moving on. The next department is, all right, 430, Public Works. Here we have another year payment of our lease agreement for the dump truck. And then we also have the new fuel storage tanks. This is the above-ground version. Robbie, would you care to explain anymore about that, or?
Sure. So as you all know, that our fuel system, our regular tank, was, I was placed out of service back in the spring. We did find some alternative fueling for unleaded gas right now. It's not the best option. I think if we had our own system, we could save us money in the long run on our fuel once we recoup some of these costs, because we can actually get unleaded gas a little cheaper than you can at the store. So we, we, I priced this out to, we don't really need to do, we don't really need to dig up the underground tanks until we decide to do something with the Public Works building. But we can place the new fuel system, and we can actually place the fuel system on our property down there where it won't interfere with any, any, any building that we're gonna do. We'll place that in, in the spot where it's supposed to go, that once it's in place, we don't need to touch it whenever we do remodeling. And people can still, we can still access that fuel system during construction to get fuel. I mean, it, it's, it's something that, it doesn't necessarily have to be done next year, but we should probably start planning and putting money back for a new fuel system.
Can you elaborate on how we currently, well, before the tank was taken offline, how we supply fuel to whom and at what cost to us per gallon?
Well, I, I can't give you an exact cost, because it's changed now, but it, because it fluctuates, just like in the, in the fuel pumps, it goes up and goes down. But we can save, we can save roughly 30 cents a gallon compared to going to the, to like Sheetz or Rural Farms or anyplace like that to get fuel through the wax card system right now, because that's currently what we're using. Because, because we can get fuel from a CoStar's contract cheaper than we can at the, at the convenience stores and gas stations. And right now, we utilize, well, GMA's utilizing it, Fire Department is utilizing it, the library bookmobile was utilizing it, and of course, the Police Department and, and my department and Parking Department utilized it.
Right, so the total for that department looks to be 185,000. About 58 of that is a scheduled payment on the truck we already own, and we do still have three, three payments to go on that, so that's not really discretionary. So that leaves about 130 that is being asked to invest in our fuel tanks. Thoughts?
A question. Robbie, you said it wouldn't have to be done this year. If it wasn't done this year, what would the implications be in terms of increased costs going down the road?
Well, you could be looking at 20% next year, maybe, or, or the following year.
So we might be looking closer to 155 if we were to pursue this in a year? Or 160?
I mean, if you would like to just wait and incorporate that, if council needs to decide if they're going to go with a new building for us, but we could do that at that time, but, you know, we could be hopefully saving money banking on that in the time being until we build that. With this new fuel system, we could be saving some money.
Well, that raises a good question where we kind of need to jump a little bit, right? We have money in here for the design on the new building? What page is that?
We do. We can have that over in Fund 1.
Okay. So we're not taking it out of Fund 18?
No.
It was in Fund 1, Charles.
Yeah, it was in Fund 1.
Okay, so we're already committing 130-something, 140?
140-something.
Ish, right? We've already committed funds for the design work on a replacement shed for the Public Works Department. So as we review these asks, you know, there's, we can look at like, what is the, the best course of action? You know, does it make sense to put these in now, knowing that they won't be disturbed by future construction? Does it make sense? I mean, it's kind of good news that we don't need to do the demolition on the existing tanks until we do the demolition on the entire shed. If I'm understanding you correctly, is that right, Robbie?
That, that is correct, yes.
So there's some savings there. So we can wait on this, you know, and save about 130,000 this year, but we will spend this money eventually and probably with a premium added to it because we waited. With all of these materials, we've seen this for three or four years now, all... All industrial products are subject to such steep inflation, supply chain issues, tariff pressures, et cetera. We would see this cost go up if we don't spend it this year.
Do you know roughly how many gallons a year we go through?
I know we normally get 1,500 gallons of unleaded a month and 1,000 gallons of diesel a month.
So 12,000-ish gallons of diesel, 18,000 gallons of unleaded fuel, roughly?
Yeah.
Annually?
Yeah.
At a savings of something like 30 cents a gallon. Oh, there's some math.
I think if my math is right, we'd have to do about 430,000 gallons of gas to recoup the 30 cents.
I mean, yeah, it's a bunch. It would take us, it looks like, you know, a year or two to recoup that. Strong opinions?
I would say add it to the whole project. Unless it's really causing, you know, issues or, you know, you have to drive far out of the way to get it, or?
No, it's not really causing any issues.
Yeah. It's just, it is a convenience and a money saver in the long run.
As long as the commitment to rebuild is going to be there. I mean, if we don't rebuild, we're going to have to do something.
Okay.
That's a, that's a super good point, right? Like, you know, we're a couple of years away from breaking ground on a new shed. We've got a lot of design work ahead of us, and, you know, two years from now, a different group of council members might say, oh, we don't have a clear line of sight on how to build this multimillion-dollar facility, so too bad that we've spent this design money, but, you know, now is the time to cinch up our belts. So there is a point, counterpoint there, too.
Robbie, a question. I don't know if you know the answer or not. What is the, what's the furthest the council could delay dealing with the tanks that are in the ground? Because eventually they will have to be dealt with, correct?
They will, yes.
So do we have an idea of what year that is?
I'd have to investigate that with DEP to find out, because I don't know exactly what that would be.
And then the life expectancy of the above-ground tanks is roughly what, do you think?
Three times more than underground, because they're above-ground and they're easy to maintain. And, I mean, the expectancy for those above-ground tanks could last my lifetime.
Sure.
You know?
Is there?
Or even Bradley's lifetime. You know?
That's a long time.
Because it's above-ground, you don't have the erosion on the tank, and, you know, and you can see what's going on with the tank above the ground. Something needs repaired on the tank, you repair the tank and.
Is there, is there a risk of contamination underground at all? Like environmentally?
There is. Our tanks are double-walled tanks.
Okay.
So now there's a tank inside of a tank, so, and we were lucky. We found, that's when we found the unleaded tank, we found fuel in the interstitial between the two tanks.
Okay.
Before it got to the environment. So, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess my question would be if we replace them now, and we do go forward to build a new building, would there be a conflict with the replacements and you'd have to build around it? Or you'd have a problem with them being there?
So, so, no, because with the design that CS Davidson did for us, that we kind of narrowed down our choice. The tank would be placed where it would be out of the road for construction, and it would be in the permanent place on the property right there, and it wouldn't be in our road, and people can, and like GMA, the fire department, us, library, they could all have access to it during construction, because it'll be out of the road of, away from our building. It has to be so many feet away from the building to begin with. So it'll be, it would be set in place for the plan that is proposed for down there.
So you think this would be a cost savings if we do it now within even a few years?
Yeah, I do agree with that.
Yeah, I see this as a cost savings, too. I would say that no matter what, if the above-ground tanks are going to be purchased, to purchase them now, I can't imagine the materials getting any cheaper. And, you know, we're going to have them one way or the other, and I think, you know, it's better to look at that savings as a cost, as a cost savings for now, and, yeah.
Yes, I agree with the cost savings. Can you, who all, does our police department also fuel there sometimes?
Yes.
So it's not just Public Works that's benefiting from these tanks?
It's the whole borough, plus GMA, library, and fire department.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, I forgot Garrett gets fuel there, too.
Do they pay us for it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's in your fee resolution. We'll go over that one when we get there.
So I think what I'm hearing is do it now, do it now, do it now, wait?
I'm going to hold off until, because we're going to have to make some decisions tonight, right? We're looking at a 311,000.
Let's put a pin in this and keep moving on.
Right.
Before we do move on, though, I do want to pass on some feedback I've gotten from the viewers at home. Your clicking pen and your candy wrappers are all they can hear over people's voices. So if you do need to open some candy, do please silence your microphone, and somebody get Patty a pen with a cap, please.
You won't have to worry about that anymore.
Can I have Patty Lawson to click around anymore?
That's right.
All right. Let's put a pin in this. We'll come back here at the end.
Over in Fund 435, sidewalks, crosswalks. There's some money in there to potentially cover a budget shortfall in our ADA curb ramp project out of CDBG. And then also, there's some money in there to cover the the cost of replacing the crosswalks on Steinware Avenue at Washington Street and in front of the Dobbin House.
So I do have a question for Chad on this. The Steinware redesign project is not like 100 years old. Why do we think these crosswalks started to fail so quickly?
I think it's for two reasons. The primary reason is that whenever we redid the Steinware street scape, we did not redo the base of the street paving.
I do recall that.
We didn't have enough money. We spent essentially all of our money on the the brick sidewalks and the decorative streetlights, and didn't have any money to replace the entire base of the street, only a mill and overlay, inch and a half mill and overlay. So the base of the street is essentially failing, and whenever, you know, the surface is only as good as the base. That was one thing. There was also a treatment that we used. It was called Street Print. No, the new one's XD. It was called Imprint that we've gone away from. We use a different technology now called Street Print XD. The crosswalk that is on Tawny Town Road across from Tommy's Pizza has the new technology with the Street Print XD that we were going to. So I don't know if we would have just went to that one in the very beginning, if that would have made a huge difference because of the fact that we only did a mill and overlay, but I think that's the primary reason. So when we're redoing these crosswalks this time, it will be a full-depth repaving of the street. We digging it out to full depth, putting in a new base, and then putting the surface treatments back.
Okay.
And, well, I have a floor on one thing. So I just had some correspondence with Charles on Friday with some updated numbers on this. So I'm not sure if Charles, if you wanted to.
Were these not the right numbers? I thought I fixed that. Maybe I didn't. What was on Steinware?
Yes, I think the total, so if you may remember, in the 2023 street work, we bid this work along with all the rest of the surface treatments, and we only got one bidder that year. It was right in the tail end of COVID, prices were really bad, and we weren't really happy with the price. And I think the price came in at just over $70,000, and we had estimated this 39.9. So we did not award it at the time. We decided to wait until this 2026 street work to rebid it. So that's what we're suggesting to do. I just want to caution that because we did have bids at over 70,000 in 2023, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to get the same really high bids this time, but there's a chance that we do again. And, you know, if you add some inflation to that, I think I was saying that this could be somewhere in on $78,000 price tag instead of the $48,000 price tag.
What is the, what is the estimated time work like this would take, cutting out the entire crosswalk there, reporing the base, and then laying the crosswalk on top?
Not very long. Yeah, and actually Charles just asked me that same question on Friday as well. Thinking about the 250th anniversary and those kind of things, and could we get it done in, you know, essentially, you know, May before we start getting a lot of tourists? And the answer is yes. You could, that goes pretty quick. They, if we can, we would have to bid the project, so the important thing here is to get it, working on it sooner than later. Getting out the bid in, say, February, that way we can open up bids in March, award in April, and construct in May. It only takes a few weeks to construct this.
Okay. But you don't think 40 is the number that's going to come in?
If I had to guess, it would be closer to 70.
Okay. So really, we're looking for Department 435, we're looking at numbers closer to 92 or 93 for capital improvements. The $22,000 for the CDBG work, that's, I wouldn't classify that necessarily as discretionary, right? We have to do the work that's been designated to have the CDBG funds used, but it's not enough. So we do have to cover that shortfall. What is the condition of these two failing crosswalks currently?
We've been patching them. I mean, we won't let the street fail. Even though it is state road, the borough is responsible for that part of the road. So anytime it gets a pothole to where it's not safe to pedestrian, or to vehicles, the Public Works Department has to go out and do some patchwork, so.
So we're getting potholes in the crosswalks themselves?
Two of them, yes.
Okay. Steinware at Washington and Steinware at the Dobbin House. Okay. So if that line item were adjusted to $70,000, where does that leave members?
How urgent is it? Like on a scale from one to 10, where do you put this project as far as?
I mean, you could continue to patch it. So is it a dire emergency? No, not necessarily. I think it's largely an aesthetic thing. I mean, these decorative street, the decorative crosswalks are, you know, primarily for that reason. It draws the pedestrians' eyes to that part. There is a safety component, because the pedestrians want to walk across the bricks instead of, you know, just jaywalking at random places. But I wouldn't say that it's a priority because of like a safety reason or anything like that. It's primarily an aesthetic thing.
I think there could be, for some folks, an argument to be made about America 250 and the desire for us to put a little polish on for that year. If it's $70,000 this year, we kick it down to 2027, you know, it's going to be more. And the longer we, longer we delay, the worse it's going to be, the more it's going to cost. And if we do get to a point where the failure of these crosswalks starts to create failures in the surrounding roadscapes, is that a possibility? Then we're looking at a much higher cost, too. I think Manager Gable has very rightly identified America 250 as an opportunity for this borough to really show the nation all of the reasons to visit Gettysburg, not just the park. There's an argument to be made for not just the safety, but also the beautification as well. But I'd like to hear from members, please.
So if I could add one more point there, so in, back in 2023, we, because this is a state road, we needed to get an HOP, Highway occupancy permit. So we do have a permit for this. We already spent the money on that two years ago. We've been extending that permit. We can't extend it past 2026, so if we don't do it in 2026, we'll have to reapply for that permit.
And what was the cost on that?
Oh, boy. I don't know. So the design work would be, would already be there. If we had to reapply for it, it wouldn't be hatefully expensive, maybe $1,000 or something like that. It's relatively low expense to reapply for it, but there is that effort. And in 2026, we are doing other street work, as you know, in your budget in other places. So we would be bidding this with that work. So it would be kind of, it wouldn't have its own bidding expense, so to speak.
Okay. All right, members, what do you think?
I almost want to see it. So is it aesthetics primarily that's the issue? Why was, why were these two chosen? And obviously, they'll need to be fixed within a year or two. So we're kicking the can down the road anyway, but I would just.
Those two were chosen because of the pothole issues in the crosswalks itself. The rest of our crosswalks out in Steinware Avenue are in decent shape.
So probably the worst one is on Baltimore Street, but as you know, we're working on a gateway connectivity project, so we don't want to spend money on that, because we're planning on tearing that up in a couple of years. But the next two worst ones are right there at the Dobbin House and right there at Tommy's Pizza.
I was going to say, too, in addition to the aesthetics with the 250th, if there's, if there was a pothole and there's a chance it can erode again, and you're going to have an increase in visitors to that area. Having, having broken my foot, actually, in a pothole in Lancaster County on a crosswalk, it's, you know, there can be, that can be dangerous, too, as well for the increase in visitors, so. So if we know that it's a problem, I would think we should, we should try to repair it.
I would wait.
You're in a lot of crickets down this end of the room here. I don't know if any of y'all ever spend any time on the social media, but I will tell you almost every single post about the borough, whether it's on the borough events, whether it's on our site, whether it's on the Times site. You don't have to go far to find a post where somebody's comment is, fix the damn roads! Fix the damn sidewalks! It's every post, right? I mean, like, this is, this is a big deal for us, right? This is something we do have to put some thought behind.
I'm going to hold my tongue on commenting back on that particular comment, Mr. Moon.
Okay, sure.
Because I feel like a lot of those comments aren't coming from our residents that actually pay taxes here. But I hear both sides of the argument there. Right now, I'm still not sure which way I would go.
Okay.
It seems like we don't have a lot of time to spend the CB, CDBG money. Is that right? CDBG money. Is that right? So I feel like this is not an urgent matter, but we are we are getting there.
Yeah, that 22 I would not consider discretionary. The following 70, perhaps 80, on these two failing sidewalks, though, that's what we're or crosswalks, that's where we need to figure out.
Okay, gotcha.
I opened the Excel version of this. So the the real numbers that Chad was alluding to are actually here. So it's 45 for Washington and 34 in front of the Daven House.
Oh, yeah, that's considerably more. All right, so we were so our two open items at this moment are 430, 740. Page about 130 K. All right, we will put a pin in this and move on to the next item. But we do need to resolve these issues tonight, folks, so formulate a position, please.
All right, in 438 Bridges, we have engineering and construction items for our emergency bridge repair. This could be budgeted out of liquid fuels. There is an argument to be made that liquid fuels, if we do not draw down these types of numbers of 151,000 in liquid fuels next year, liquid fuels will go over $1 million in available money, which could get a lot of roadwork done in 2027. Which is why I'm suggesting we do the emergency bridge repairs out of available funds in Fund 18. Either way, we need to get this one done. Question is, how do you want to pay for it?
Right. So our choice is either to take this out of Fund 18, which is capital improvements, or out of the are you saying out of the reserves or out of the general fund?
No, out of Fund 18.
Or?
Or liquid fuels.
Out of liquid fuels, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, correct.
I mean, yeah, we could get a million dollars worth of roadwork done in 2027, or we could get $850,000 worth of roadwork done in 2027. Do we have a million dollars worth of work scheduled for 2027?
Not yet, but I think these two guys could do that in probably five minutes.
Yeah. All right. So just to refresh everybody's memory, this is the bridge we had a report on recently. It is imminently failing, and we have been ordered by the state to repair it. The north side has the support beams have rusted through, and it's not safe. So we do have to do this work. We can pay out of pay it out of liquid fuels, or we can pay it out of capital improvements. Either way, we're dipping into funds that we would like to spend on other things, but we got to spend it somewhere. So I don't think we need to spend a crazy amount of time here on this. I think the question is, for each member, do you prefer to spend this out of liquid fuels, which is money we would use for roads and bridges, or do you want to spend it out of capital improvement, which is stuff we could use for many, many, many other things?
Liquid fuels.
I would agree, liquid fuels for this. Liquid fuels, for sure.
Okay.
Fund, Department 439 Roads Alley's, we have a local match. These these are are matches for pending or already awarded grants. And those are tied to specific capital projects. Save for Streets for All, Gettysburg Interloop Phase B1, should it be awarded? Which I just did apply for that last week. So that grant application is in. And then, of course, the Gateway Connectivity Project, which is the Flap Grant. This is the match for the Flap Grant that we're currently working through. Should we get awarded the the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program for the Interloop 439-377? This would be essentially a reimbursement. This would not be just drawing down. This would be the 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 state share of that grant, the 1.1 mil. Then we have 378, which is street work. We are proposing to do the second street preservation contract, and then the Gateway Connectivity Project Build Match. Should we be awarded that build grant next summer?
I mean, when we are awarded that build grant?
When we are awarded that build grant next summer.
All right. I don't I don't know that there's a lot to knock out here, folks, right? Like, this is all stuff we have previously committed to, and we we do have matching funds. We do have to apply to much of our grant funding streams. I know, like, some of these numbers look really terrifying, like the last one, Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project Build Grant Match. It's almost $1 million, but the potential award that we are matching is?
Just under 20 million.
Right. So you know, because we have been running at a surplus, because we do a pretty decent job of of managing our annual budgets over the last 10 years, we do have these monies at our disposal for these grant matches. And, you know, I know these numbers are intimidating, but this is how we move forward with these projects. So is there anything in here that somebody feels strongly we should not pursue? Okay.
Over in the Parking Department, we have no proposed expenditures out of capital projects. The GARA, I've I put this in, this was in the the budget last year, and we have not transferred to 10,000. I put another 10,000 in here. The idea there was to start helping GARA invest in a capital improvement program of their own. But we are, we have not seen what that document looks like. So we haven't really been transferring these this 10,000. So is this something you'd like to leave sit there or just cut it?
So that's an interesting question, right? Over time, we have seen our annual contributions to GARA go up every budget. That's just the nature of finance. It's we will often hear, you know, if you've got an empty parcel, you should put a park on it. But parks do not generate revenue. They cost money. So they, for us to have a large recreational facility here in the borough is an ongoing expense for us. Anyone who's been to the park recently knows there's lots of places they could use some help. The original GARA agreement, you know, that the park would be funded not only by the borough, but also by partner townships has not always favored the borough. I think that's a fine way to say that. And even at a time now where I think we are seeing a really a revitalized approach to how we utilize the park. The current leadership is very engaged and very dynamic and very thoughtful in how they approach spending their monies. Still, there are there are projects that are outside of their reach. Anybody who's been there recently, some of us will visit there tomorrow for Election Day, take a moment and notice the horse the horseshoe-shaped parking lot. It is terrible, and it has been terrible for as long as I've lived here. But they don't have the means to repair it, right? So I understand the wisdom of helping them establish a SIP fund of their own. But we do have some, you know, tough questions we're asking ourselves tonight about where we want to spend our money. So is this $10,000 well spent to help our partners at the Rec Park, or is this something we need to maybe hold off on?
I think it's well spent. I would like to encourage the other townships to to do the same on an equal amount. But I'd also like to make sure that we, as partners that are helping fund, that have some input into their strategic planning and their capital improvement plans as well. But I do think it is well spent, just looking at the number of residents in the borough and the visitors that come to the Rec Park for many things that benefit the borough.
I agree with Mr. Carr. And are they, so they're working on a SIP? It just hasn't?
I've encouraged them to develop one. I don't know that they're actively preparing one.
Okay. But until that was seen, this would just stay in this fund base?
Correct me if I'm wrong. So at the moment, it's a placeholder. It's holding there. If they do create a plan.
When I talk to Mr. Moyer about this, I, you know, he he understands that this would not be for operational costs. This would be for long-term strategic planning of their infrastructure. And I suggested that, like, we have Fund 18, they should have a similar fund that where they can start building up these nest eggs for these big projects like the, you know, redo the redo the skate park, build a splash pad, whatever, whatever the case may be.
So this particular line item was in our budget last year and has not been used.
It's still there. We could give them that that 10,000. I just haven't seen the capital plan.
I think it's important to keep in the budget. I feel like, as you mentioned, Mr. Moon, that you have a dynamic crew on board and on GARA, leadership's there. I feel like it's going to grow, and this if we remove the $10,000, it would sort of be like taking the wind out of the sails. So I agree with Mr. Carr and Mr. Bales. We should keep the $10,000 there.
Yeah, I think Mr. Moyer is doing a good job. I think he is very engaged, and I like the direction of where they're going. So I would say keep it in.
All right, great. Thank you.
Nothing in 465. And finally, there's nothing in 492. So with the exception of removing the bridge work and putting that over in Fund
Liquid fuels.
Yeah, Fund 35. Everything else would would stay.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Good enough.
We'll we'll move on. And when we get to the end where we're discussing the revenue side, that's when we'll revisit the pins we put into 430 and 435.
Right. And then, before we get back to the general fund, we have Fund 30. This is capital reserve money. So this is, every month, I show you the the amount of liquid cash that are sitting in our various funds. This is a really large one. There's the better part of over $2 million sitting in Fund 30. That is essentially because Fund, anything sitting in Fund 30 has not been earmarked for a project yet. So once council decides what they want to spend money on in Fund 18, I will transfer the the requisite amount of money from Fund 30 into Fund 18, where then it will sit until it's spent. So with Fund 30, this is not a whole lot to discuss in this, especially from a revenue perspective. It's mostly interest. And then money out, which is interfund transfers out. So you can see, based on our discussions tonight, I had been planning on transferring 1.29 million dollars from Fund 30 to Fund 18. That will change a little bit based on your direction as it relates to the bridge work. So I don't know what that math comes to, but it'll be lower than 1.2 million. And then this is where my my proposal for America 250 sits. So I think the council should discuss that a little bit as well.
Yeah. Tell us a little again, can you refresh our memories on that $100,000?
Yeah. So in my budget presentation on October 14th, I concluded that presentation with the goals of the Adams County Commission, how the Garden Club is partnering with the borough to essentially present the borough to the world next year with the idea of the increased flag footprint across the municipality, with the 13 colony flags around the square, with the American flag in the center. And then with the recreation of the Gettysburg Address in November of 2026, that that will be a very expensive event, but the rewards on that almost immeasurable, in my view, based on the the projected number of people that will be in the municipality the week of November 17th through the 22nd of 2026. So my proposal was to invest in that kind of effort at a pretty high level. And what my proposal to pay for that was, was to use a portion of the interest earnings on the ARPA money that has been accumulating over the last five years. It's been well over well over $150,000 in interest earnings on that money in the last few years.
So do I understand correctly, this $100,000 line item is being transferred from that interest fund? Or is this coming out of the general fund?
No, it would come right out of Fund 30. That's where the interest has been accumulating.
Okay. So this would be a fund that you would, the borough, not you, the borough, would be able to use for investment in really anything that comes up over the course of the year, whether it's beautification, whether it's?
Yeah, there's going to be a need for a way to feed tens of thousands of people. So there would probably be food beverage tents set up. There would be a lot of relief facilities that would be required. Transportation shuttle networks. I do think that this large, this event's going to be large enough where we're going to have to invest in a shuttle system. Because I don't see tens of thousands of people driving to Gettysburg all at the same day. There's also going to be a very large security footprint that goes with this. Stuff we haven't seen here, I think, is going to be required.
Yeah, I I have to, I tend to agree with the manager that the, and I'm sure Jill would echo this as well, but I don't want to speak for you, but the potential economic impact on our community of this event, this year-long event, is frankly immeasurable.
Yeah.
I would be personally supportive of this investment.
I would as well. I actually think that that's a low number. I don't encourage us to raise it. I think it's a, I actually think it's a low number for what is actually going to be needed. I would encourage that, as you look at things, anything that we actually purchase, not things that we rent for this event, but anything we actually purchase, such as flags or banners, that we could, that has any kind of shelf life that could be used for multiple events, even after the America 250. Now, I understand that there's some that are going to have the America 250 logo on it, and that's good for a year. But anything else, patriotic bunting, the the 13 colony flags, good quality things that we can utilize and pull out at other types of events in the borough for years to come. So anything that we can hold on to for shelf life, that would be great. But I do think that that it is certainly needed to prep for this huge events that are going to happen that year.
Just like to also reiterate, the this funding formula, it can truly be said that no tax dollars paid for this. It's truly, it was just simply interest that was earned on money that was sitting in the bank.
Yeah.
We're talking about thousands of people coming. It's 250. That doesn't happen, obviously, that often. So I'm supportive of this.
Certainly, I see the value added to the purchases made. I appreciate that you found the money with the interest. That was clever. And I think we're being asked to host this major event as part of a national.
Nation Spotlight will be on us, no doubt about that.
I I did have a question, though, in terms of helping us understand how and through what how and through what um, channels the borough would realize revenue from this event. I know when we had the sesquicentennial some years ago and other events like that, I know that, you know, businesses do really well, um, you know, museums, um, but aside from the parking revenue, how does the, how does the borough um, yield revenue on that?
I think some of that might, uh, and I, I haven't had these discussions with Main Street, but I, I, I would, I would hope that we could figure out, and, and this is, this frankly is kind of in its infancy, but you know, food and beverage is, is, there's an opportunity there. So you know, if, if, if ma- maybe that money isn't coming directly into uh, the, the borough's coffers, perhaps the Main Street volunteers could do something, or any other, the fire department could be part of this equation as well, where they could be making money off of uh, that type of service. Uh, in my mind, I think that would work. Uh, I just don't know what that footprint looks like just yet. Uh, there's a lot of discussions uh, with the Lincoln Fellowship and, and things that, because they're, they're the ones that are doing the programming on this, but they're gonna need a lot of logistical support. You know, Jill, Jill, do you have any thoughts on that with, from a Main Street perspective?
I think it's gonna be an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing. Um, if there's opportunity for collaboration and partnerships across of working primarily under Wendy Allen with the Lincoln Fellowship and following their lead, and I know I'm not on the camera. So um, yeah, I, I think we can work on some revenue models now that it's rolling out in a, in a, in a, almost in overwhelming fashion, so.
Yeah, I understand, uh, you know, very viscerally the question you're asking and I, I feel like that's a place where I, I'm often focused in a lot of the initiatives we've been taking over the last couple of years is how, how does the borough create revenue? I think I, I see this event as i- it, it almost is certain to cost us money. We're not gonna make revenue. This is about an investment in our community and um, you know, giving all of our business community from the south end of town to the, to the downtown, um, a truly banner year. Um, you know, we, we should expect to see every lodging at capacity, every restaurant at capacity for, you know, weeks at a time throughout different portions of this. And when, I think when Charles says that, you know, the eyes of the nation will be on us, what Wendy is, well, what the Lincoln Fellowship is putting together, but really what Wendy is putting together, is so ambitious. Like, this is a, I mean, this is essentially like a civics moonshot. You know, what she's trying to do with this recreation. And I, I, it's absolutely true. Eyes will be on us from all over the world. We, we have um, you know, I think a different way of wording, the way you said it, Alicia, is this is an opportunity we've been given, not something we've been asked to do. Chances are, we will spend more than this and it will still be worth it for the longevity and health of this community.
I totally understand that question, Ms. Lawson. Um, and I really appreciate uh, the, the, Mr. Gable just mentioned Main Street and the Fire Hall, Main Street and the Fire Department, because those are two um, not-for-profits that help the borough a great deal. Um, and if there is any way that they can, um, through food and beverage sales, that they can, that we can help them with this event, they're in turn helping us every single year. And um, I think that that would be really great to, to be able to partner with them on that. But of course, parking as well and event parking, cost should be up.
If, if, and I, I, my, my mind's racing at the moment because um, ironically tomorrow, Jill and I are, are gonna be meeting with the, the main organizer of Bike Week, uh, because they do this every year. And so they could certainly guide us on those types of business models that we could recreate for this type of event.
And I, I do appreciate that, that you have been investing the um, you know, getting the interest from the ARPA funds. So I think that was very um, savvy and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean that, I mean if those funds had one purpose, it's, it's to revitalize and reinvest in, in um, our communities, big and small. So I think that's an appropriate use of those interests as well.
And we should also add too, I think there are a lot of communities that just let those funds languish. They did not use them. And I think that through our borough manager, I think um, you know, that was uh, just very strategic, the way they were used. You know, following COVID. And so I think we, we didn't leave money on the table and I think that's really important.
We're getting a lot of consequential things done because of that.
Absolutely.
That's absolutely right. Okay, so I don't, I think I'm hearing anybody take it out, right? Okay.
Okay.
I, I know, uh, before we move on, uh, that is um, Patty's right. You, you've shown a lot of initiative there and a lot of creativity there and um, you deserve uh, some congratulations on that. I think you're thinking ahead and I think you're thinking big and um, you, you are definitely getting creative with the funding and I, I just want to say I appreciate it.
Welcome. Okay, Fund One. So over in Fund, um, I'm trying to find ways to maybe assist here with uh, the shortfall. Fund One, 409374. Repairs and maintenance to machinery. This is the second half of the bill to do the new HVAC system for this building. Uh, the first half was already paid for. Uh, and then I asked the, the vendor to, to push this off a little bit into the second half payment for, in, in 2026. Uh, we could remove that from Fund One, the 63,000 and the 36,000 from Fund One. And put it in Fund 18, which we have a little wiggle room there now since you moved the bridge work from Fund 18 over to Fund 35. So this would be 150,000 of your 300 and some thousand dollar hole.
Yep.
Uh, which would get you closer to balance.
Yep.
If that's something you'd be interested in.
That makes pretty good sense to me. Anybody else? Yeah.
All right, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take these out right now. This, and then we're gonna go back over here to the first sheet and see what the math comes to. Takes you down to 206.
So at this point, let's bounce back to those two, those pinned items in Fund 18. So we've got on page 13, we've got the um, fuel tanks that are coming in about $130,000.
Yep.
And.
That was in Fund 18, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, Fund 18, page 13, 430, 740. And on the next page, page 14, we've got the uh,
Crosswalks.
The crosswalks on uh, Steinware.
79,000.
And those are coming in around.
79.
90? It's 45 and 34?
79.
So there's 209,000 and where are we at? 206,000 dollar deficit. So we could zero this out right now if we remove those projects.
I think you're.
And still have like $3,000 to spare.
You're, I think you might be intermixing funds.
I might.
So. Where were you looking at the uh, the crosswalks?
Fund 18, page 14.
Yeah, that, that's not gonna help your general fund.
No?
No.
Okay. Can you explain it to me? Cause I'm dumb.
Not dumb. Uh, Fund 18 is the capital projects. Uh, so if you, e- even if you cut that, it does not save you money in Fund One.
Okay. I guess I misunderstood.
It just allows you to use the money for something else in the future.
Okay, so the 209,000 dollars worth of projects we put a pin in will not affect the 206,000 shortfall we have currently in Fund One?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So um, let's put these two issues to bed though and then move on. Uh, so 43740 is the fuel tanks. About 130,000-ish. It's work that does need done. If we wait, we still need to do it. It'll just cost more. What does anybody want to do?
This doesn't, uh, doesn't have anything to do with our deficit in Fund One. So.
No.
So I say we, we do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Berger.
Okay. And then the next page, the crosswalks. Again, this does not, if, this doesn't touch our deficit in Fund One?
Correct.
All right, this is $79,000-ish. The bids could come back 190, we never know. Um, we do have this failing infrastructure and we do have uh, responsibility to keep our infrastructure up. Leave it in or take it out.
These are the bridges?
No, these are the crosswalks.
On Steinware.
On Steinware, at Washington Street and in front of the Davenhouse.
And it's not gonna affect Fund One?
If it's not affecting our deficit and we're gonna have to clean it up and fix it anyway, we may as well be doing it in the hopes that it's gonna be pretty for America 250.
I agree.
Do it.
Okay.
Would this, is this gonna close Steinware? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, is this gonna close Steinware down for a couple of weeks in the middle of May?
No.
Okay.
No, this is probably one, you know, one lane at a time, cause we can't, we can't close the road down totally anyway, cause it's a state road. We have to do one, one lane at a time. So we do the, the west lane and the east lane second. And it's just a matter of flagging traffic. Um, it won't be closed down in the project probably, I guess in two weeks' time. Yeah.
Well, it would still make a bottleneck there for more traffic on Steinware.
It, it could potentially, yeah, but it'll have to be flagged.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still in the opinion to wait until we have got maybe a slower year or a different time of year, if that's even possible.
Okay. Um, I think, uh, is anybody swayed there? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question, I guess. With a higher volume of foot traffic in these crosswalks, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Would you be subject to liability if somebody does serious damage to their body by falling into a pothole? That's a weird question. I don't know. Patty, you said you fell in Lancaster, but nothing happened. But some people are litigious. I'm just asking that question.
Any, anything to put in there?
They, I don't think they'd be allowed to cross during the construction if that's what you're concerned about.
No, what I'm saying is if it's not fixed and somebody falls in a pothole and breaks a leg or does serious damage to their body.
Is that the borough's liability?
That's, yeah.
Well, always, someone's always gonna find a way to sue us.
Sure, sure.
Sure.
I came to visit and the road was down to half a lane. I'm suing you. Okay, I think, so I'm hearing, I think, a majority opinion that we should keep it in and get it done. Yes? Okay, all right. So that, I think that closes out Fund 18. So I guess we need to go back to Fund One?
Yeah.
You need to do some number crunching there?
So taking out the HVAC bill takes you down to 206. See if there's anything else in Fund uh, 409 that we could trim some fat on. Um, we could. There's about 15,000 here related to the capital improvement plan update, uh, engineering work. We, we could pay for that out of Fund 18 as well. When you discussed this uh, the other week, you wanted to keep it. But it's an option.
And where are our?
Let's go over to.
So what is our current Fund 18 reserve? Is it the?
There's over uh.
3.2.
In the, in, in Fund 30, which is your capital reserve, uh, there's over 2 million.
Okay. And we're taking how much out of there already?
Well, since you moved the bridge work to Fund 35, that would take it down to probably about a million is my guess.
Okay. All right, so 15,000 would not decimate that?
Uh, correct. The other here is um, you wanted to leave it, but if you wanna, you know, trim the fat, we, we, we could defer the alleys at 50,000 again.
I would not be in favor of deferring alleys. They are terrible. Anybody else want to defer?
And not use liquid fuels on the alleys.
That's weird and dumb. Anybody else feel like deferring alleys is a good use of our frugality?
Not at this point, no. Not a good idea.
All right, um, not a whole lot there to trim in Department 438 with bridges. The sidewalk replacement program, 35,000. It's a possibility to trim. Department 435, 313. Actually, I take that back. That's for CD Beach or curb ramps.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't uh, do a whole lot with that unfortunately. Okay, um, we zeroed this out already last week, uh, on 445 with the kiosks.
Right.
So I don't think there's a whole lot there to trim. This is for rec park work, shade tree. Running out of spots.
Hey, Charles.
Yep.
This could be a stupid question. The same uh, fund that, that houses the interest rates that we're using for the 250, could that be used towards the deficit if there's more interest sitting in there?
Probably. Uh, when I asked the auditors, so generally if you put money into your capital budgets, you're not supposed to use them ever again for operational purposes. But when I asked the auditor the question, can we use the interest for the America 250, the answer came back. the answer came back yes. So I could say that you could probably do that.
How much is in there after the 100 is?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. I'd have to go look, but I know there's, well, hold on. Let me see what I'm projecting next year in Fund 30 for interest. So interest earnings, we're looking at next year about 63,000. That's on top of the interest that was already accumulated over many years. So in theory, I, you, to your point, we could take the 63 and then put that back into the general fund to balance the budget.
Does that make fiscal sense to you?
It's innovative.
I get, um, a little nervous about dipping into all of our reserve funds just because we do have such an ambitious capital improvement plan, and there's so many times and places where we have emergencies we need to pay for. We have grant funding we need to match. We need to pay for, you know, grant writing, et cetera. I almost think that those, those funds might find a better use someday for things that we really cannot foresee. An example that comes to mind from this year is when the, our friends at Happy brought a grant to our attention with only a few days to finish the grant writing on it. And we were able to do that as most of the design phase was already substantially complete, and Chad was able to help them kind of bang out that grant application in just a few days' time. But the staff did not have the resources to do that work. So because we have these funds sitting in reserve pots, we can do things like bring in Michael Baker International to do professional grant writing for us on a short-term basis, and like, we have those funds for those emergency situations. I, I would hate to, like, put us in a posture of just kind of draining all of our rainy day stuff in order to, um, just pay the bills. I mean, that said, like, this is a weird year, too, right? So like, we've had some bizarre budgeting years here, 2020, 2021, 2022. These were all lean times and difficult times, where we had to make some really brutal cuts. And I think, you know, we should all be sort of thoughtful about proposing a tax increase here. We do need to be mindful of that. There are, is a large swath of this population right now that is really uncertain about simple things like food as of two days ago. There's a large swath of this population who are really sweating bullets over what's about to happen to their health insurance. So whereas last year, you know, a relatively modest $25 to $35 a month tax increase for the average home was not the end of the world, next year it, it could be really devastating. So we do need to be thoughtful about that. That all said, you know, there's a lot of ambitious work in here. When we put together that SIP four and a half years ago, it was a $26 million plan. And, um, you know, just as I learned so much from Judy, I think I also learned a lot from Wes Heiser. And one of the things he said that echoes in my head whenever I think about my own inherent desire to be frugal versus, um, what I think the needs of the borough are. He said this thing this one time when we were yelling at a vendor. He said Gettysburg is a borough that tends to get things done. And that has really stuck with me these last several years. Our, our capital improvements are ambitious. We do so much more than any other small town our size, with a population our size. And the reason we do so much more is because this place deserves ambition. It deserves forward thought. We do have a responsibility to keep moving forward with a lot of these projects, to keep the borough building and growing. But there is a balance to be struck, you know, right now, as so many people are looking at difficult financial times. So I'm not interested, you know, necessarily in let's just pay for this all with a tax increase. You know, we've talked about transferring funds from other places to cover parts of this deficit, and that might be prudent here. But I also don't want to get too... I, I think it might be short-sighted of us to, you know, necessarily drain these funds that we could use for emergency purposes, to, um, cut projects that the borough needs, right? We, we need safe streets and sidewalks and crosswalks. We, we need, I mean, we've had our own staff fall and injure themselves on our crosswalks and sidewalks.
Who was that?
Okay, like a few of them. You know, where we can, we need to do stuff, right? So, I mean, yes, we are looking at a moderate, a modest tax increase here, but I think there is still some room to offset with, with the reserve funds here.
So just to Mr. Bell's point, I, I did the math here. It takes, if, if we were to use about 63,000 in reserves, it takes your budget deficit to 143.
And then in your budget presentation, you were recommending a, a use of...
I was, general fund reserves.
Was it ARPA and then a millage?
Yeah, it would be general fund, so, so there's a couple buckets of reserve funds. One is your capital reserve, which is earmarked for capital projects. You also have a fund balance policy. As, and the, as the fund balance policy relates to Fund 1, you should always have between 18 and 25% of your annual budget in reserve, and we have that. So, so my, my thought when I gave my budget, budget presentation was a mix of drawing down on general fund reserve and whatever you're comfortable with a millage increase. And that millage increase is primarily tied to funding the police officer that was hired a few years ago, or authorized to be hired a few years ago, and never had a funding stream associated with it.
Do you remember, I guess the numbers have all changed now, but originally, did you have a number of that, not the millage number, but the, what the ARPA funds, if I'm, unless I'm saying...
Yeah, if you had, um... Please hold, I'll show you. So let's take the 63 back out. And if you did something in the neighborhood of the millage increase that you did last year, and say you repeated it for this year, you would have a deficit of $14,000 now, and that would be reserves. This came way down because we took that, uh, the, uh... What did we take out of the general fund?
The parking?
Yes.
The kiosks.
Yeah, the kiosks.
And if I remember my math correctly from last year, we did a, I think it was a .3796 was our millage?
It is .3796, correct.
And that increase that we had to implement last year, do you remember that number off the top of your head?
Say that again.
The millage increase last year?
Was .3796.
Okay, so that was the increase?
Yep.
All right. That millage increase, I am really just spitballing the math here. I'd have to... For a home valued at around $250,000, that's about a $29 a month tax increase. So if your home is valued at less, you would pay less than that, right? It's a percentage on the valuation. So that's, so if we went with the exact same millage increase this year, .3796, that would be approximately $29, $30, something like that, per month for a, a home valued at 250. And then that would leave us with just like 15 grand we would need to make up out of reserves.
Yeah, and that's very, very doable.
And that would be like a $348, on that value of a home, it would be like $348 increase annually, an annual increase is what we're saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, last week, you gave us a different number to transfer to cover. It was closer to 140, I think.
Yeah, that's before your budget adjustments tonight.
Right. And so if we kept that 140 transfer over, that could drop the millage considerably, but we're just...
Correct.
You know, kind of moving money from one bucket to another. But at the end of the day, we need to be cognizant of the fact that our costs keep going up. The, the desire to keep taxes level burns very strongly in a lot of us, but we, we have to do it periodically. Some older and wiser and more mustachioed former members of council would tell you that we should do a small increase every year, whether we need it or not, just so that it's not as painful when it does happen. Small, small millage increases each year would create potential surpluses as well. Anyway, I, I think the .3796 is workable, but I need to hear every other, all the other opinions here on the panel, please.
If we're, if we're talking about 348 in actual dollars, approximately...
Depends on the valuation.
Right. Keeping in mind what you said earlier about, I, I think people will be shocked at the increase in their healthcare come January 1. And food costs, I don't know about you, I'm a single person. I go to the grocery store. I can't get out of there for under 150 for one person. And I'm not eat, I'm not buying a lot of meat or anything, you know? I think food costs, I think, um, the healthcare, people who have to pay daycare. I, I just think if we can whittle that down, 350 is a big bite. That's a tax, that's a car payment. You know, I'd like to see us shave that some more. My, my thought.
I, I agree. I would be either in the, um, camp of, if it's at 140 now, that's what we're talking.
So, let's, let's do this backwards. Let's take this out. This is what would happen if you did last year's millage. And it takes you to 206. The question is, what are you comfortable using in reserve? So let's figure out that, and then I can reverse engineer it to come out with a millage that would be less than the .3762.
Let's split it in half and see what it looks like. So 103 from reserves.
I don't know what that millage is going to be off the top of my head without taking a recess and doing some math, but let's just assume we're going to use 100,000 in reserves. So I'd need to create a millage number that would equal 106,000, which is roughly .2, give or take, based on our valuation.
So that gets it down probably somewhere around $17 or $18 a month for a home valued at 250? And that, I'm really just ballparking it. I'm not a math thing.
And that's not using the 63 that we talked about before from the interest?
Uh, it, it would be. It would be either out of the, out of the interest on Fund 30 or out of the, the reserves that are currently sitting in Fund 1.
Okay.
And just refreshing, we, we said the, the crosswalks on Steinware, those two crosswalks and the the, the above-ground gas...
Fuel tank.
Or fuel would not come out of this at all.
Correct.
Right, okay, okay, no. So with 17, is basically $17 increase, we're looking at about a 200, $204 annual increase for families or for individuals, homeowners.
Right, and, and those estimates are incredibly loose, and they're going to wildly vary depending on the valuation of them.
Right, I realize that.
Yep. What do you want to do, folks?
I prefer the .2 over the .37 at this point.
Me, too.
I find that our, our climate, I mean economically for people, is just, it's an emergency for them. So I feel like we can, we can stave off for a while at our own emergencies. I mean, I know we can't forecast what might happen and what emergencies might arise, but I feel like we, we need to take into account what's happening with, with a lot of people in the public right now and just be mindful, as you suggested.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd be more comfortable with this or just paying all of it out of the, um, capital funds. But if that's, if you guys want to split the difference, I'm okay with that, too.
Ella, do you have any observations on this conversation?
Well, I just checked that 200 was the, um, the average, you know, cost across Gettysburg. So I, yeah, I think it makes the most sense. I think taking everything out of reserves would really be risky, because I mean, especially seeing something like the bridge happening where nobody was aware of that, and then all of a sudden, it was, it's a huge amount of money that the borough has to spend. But again, also taking into account how much more expensive things are getting. And just like the loss to support programs. So I think this is a good compromise.
Okay. So I think I'm hearing a relatively chashy.
All right, so when we advertise this for next week, in your, in your, um, motion, there'll be a millage associated with Fund 1 that'll be in the .2 range, probably just a little tick north of .2 is my guess, but...
And that's less, that's almost a point less than last year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, last year was .37.
I feel, I feel better about that. I feel like we can, I can live with that.
Okay. Anything else on the fundings, or do we move on to fees?
Let's do fees and call it a day.
Yes.
All right, uh, this is the redline version, so we'll just go through it. Some of these were Mr. Rittmore's suggestions, so Code Enforcement Appeals Board, 1,005, 1,050, it's been 1,000 for a long time. And whenever you have those types of things, we have to hire a stenographer. That's largely what the fee would be used for.
Yeah, I would say, and overall, when it comes to the increases, you'll see a number of them, they're related to the fee schedule that was established in 2015 utilizing Consumer Price Index, inflation counts in the past 10 years. Many of those numbers are changed to reflect current value based on that 2015, uh, fee resolution.
Any heartburn over Code Enforcement Appeals Board? Okay. I suggested increasing the rental housing reinspection fee by $25. It was 100. My, my logic there is, um, you should get it right the first time. You're given a checklist to make sure that your rental property is in compliance. And so if you don't do your homework upfront, then there's, there's something that should be some consequence on the backend. some consequence on the back end.
That doesn't, that seems kind of low to me, as if you're going to do an increase, to me, I would say one-fifty, rather than one-twenty-five, I don't know what my colleagues think about that.
Anyone?
The, the alternative
He's going to talk me off the ledge.
Oh, yeah, the alternative is, the complaint we receive is that it's an expense, and it creates hardship for the landlord, so, keep that in mind, that, that there's legitimacy to that to a certain extent with the administrative burden.
And every expense we create for a landlord, including property tax, is at some level passed on to the tenant.
Can I ask, how often does this happen, that you have to re-inspect?
Once every three years.
No, no, this is re, this is the re-inspect.
Oh, okay, so with the re-inspection, after you failed your inspection, so, one, you're required to have an inspection every three years.
That's the eighty dollars.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to like, is this something that happens often? And, you know, people, people slip up, people mess up, or is this kind of abnormal?
Good question.
It, it's not necessarily an abnormal situation, we have select properties that I would say have a, a continuous streak of issues. Generally, though, it is, we, we, we really have been proactive, and with ha, with having Pete on staff, our code enforcement official, we're able to engage with property owners to avoid some of these things, and especially when it's minor problems that can be remedied, with like purchasing fire alarms or not having to do like full infrastructure, it's things, some of these things are pretty easy to fix. So, it's something, there's a clear benefit, it's not, it's not necessarily going to be any single individual that's, or a class of individuals that are contin, continue having the problems, but.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Ms. Lawson, I think it should go up, I think that this is a, an opportunity to make sure that they get, like, don't do it again, make sure you get it right the first time. And some of those things that they need to accomplish are basic, basic things that they should have already known about. So, I, I agree, I think it should be higher.
Okay, one-fifty? Okay, one-fifty.
Okay, moving on. And I'm scrolling, if there's something that isn't changed that you think should be, just speak up. The four-fifty is a, this is set by not us, so, just point that out.
That's four dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, four, behalf of the borough, four-fifty each, construction building permit issued under the Uniform Construction, so that's a PMCA thing.
Okay. Is that back to nineteen-sixty, or what? I mean, really?
I, I have it highlighted, that I, I wanted to go back into their fee schedule to make sure that it actually still is four-fifty, that's why I have that highlighted, but it's not something we set.
No, huh. The cost of doing business is more than that, I'm sure.
Sure, right.
You know?
Uh, the, uh, non-uniform construction code building permit. Minimum permit under this is twelve dollars, to, up to a maximum fee of one-hundred-twenty dollars.
Okay.
Slight increase there. Then we get down to, ah, ordinance text amendments, do you want to speak to that?
So, this is in regards to the SADO, and then the following one is the, yeah, regarding the SADO. This allows for residents, business owners, anyone that's engaged with business conduct in the borough to request that the physical text related to the SADO is changed, to either a, benefit their project or to enable a project of some sort. It's not, it's something that we have costs associated with publication, they're generally not necessarily drafting, but it is something that there's going to be costs with the attorney, and if there's any additional review from planning commission, just, there's time and efforts coming.
Okay.
All right. Then, our next one is special event fee application, and I split the difference with our planning director here.
I want a little more. This one, what we're finding, we have a number of special events, they seem to be increasing on a yearly basis, but we're also, as staff, being put in a position where we're having to work as event planners. Oftentimes, the applicants, while well-meaning, do not have all the necessary information to facilitate a correct application, especially when we're having to deal with PennDOT. This fee was previously thirty dollars, the increase would basically reflect the staff time associated with the entire series of special event permits that go over the years. As we'll have a few that are very easy to administer, but then there will be some that we're spending substantial staff time in completion, and those are for our larger events, which have a clear economic development impact.
Yeah, planning director Whitmore's original suggestion on this was fifty dollars. I, I thought that was a bit steep, going from thirty to fifty, so I, I dialed it back, but I could be, I could be persuaded.
I was going to say sixty is what I would think.
I could be persuaded.
Yeah, especially the amount of staff time.
I just thought that was a big, big jump for one year.
But we're increasing the events, special events, it's taking a lot more work, some of the events are much more.
Yeah.
So, forty-five seems like a bargain.
Anyone?
Sure, I agree with Patty, I think forty-five is a bargain, um, keep it at that.
Fifty, do I have fifty-five?
Okay.
Fifty?
Split the difference fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Yeah.
Fifty-five, all right, that's what I will put in the draft, all right.
And that's up from what this year?
Thirty.
I mean, that's almost a hundred percent raise.
That's kind of, for the borough, though, that's kind of a, an over and above thing in what we do, I mean,
Sure.
what our responsibility is in terms of public safety and roads and public works and things like this, so this is a add-on.
Yeah, I, I think we've also had previous discussions, too, where, you know, there might be room for streamlining in our permitting processes, right?
We do need to redo the form, and, and Mr. Whitmore and I are, that's on our radar.
Okay. Okay.
All right, I, I did increase the proposed parade, fixed parade route fees, simply because they've been the same since council adopted this.
Five, six years ago?
Five or six years ago.
Our, our staff cost goes up every year.
Absolutely, so there's modest increases of a hundred dollars in each one of the parade routes.
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate. The, the wages we pay, especially police, go up dramatically every year, and if there's overtime involved, a hundred bucks does not even touch it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we still, the, these are, i- in full candor, the, you know, for parade route A, which is the short route, which is our typical Halloween parade route, which ironically is the most, one of the most expensive parade routes, that, the fifty-one-hundred actually does not completely cover the borough's expenses.
And then we, and then we underwrite the permit, too.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Amusement ordinance, John, you want to talk to that? Junk dealer.
So, um, yeah, the amusement ordinance that captures games of chance, as it were, arcade-style event, things like that, claw machines. The junk dealer ordinance, this one came up last year, there was a question, I believe, President Moon had asked regarding a scenario where you're hiring someone to, to drive trash away from your residence or something like that. Technically, within the borough, if you're engaged in that, in that, I guess, business activity, you are supposed to be licensed. We do send out notification to our known providers, this is, both of these were licenses that had not been updated in over ten years.
The amusements ordinance fee, that's also for anybody who collects the amusement tax?
Yeah.
Right, so it's not just about games of chance, it's also about theaters and
Circuses, anything that has
Tours.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Uh, and so junk dealers is the same as junk haulers, is that what you're saying?
Well, as it relates to the, the, the language in the ordinance, it, it affects individuals who are engaged in like, the business of junk. It's, it's like junk sales, junk recovery, it, it really is, it's, it's, it's in line with trash removal.
I thought maybe it was antique dealers at first, you were kind of referring it in a very colloquially old way. But this is like, you know, trashes us or something kind of thing, you just call them up and they haul it out. So, it's gone up from one, one-hundred, is that right?
Yes.
To, to two-hundred-and-five.
And how many of these do we issue every year?
I do not have that one handy, it's something, I can get that. Overall, the, I want to say, this is one that's going to be sub-thirteen, if you even have ten. We, we don't have that many.
So, I would actually not want to see that go up for a couple reasons. One, people who are hauling junk, that is not the most lucrative profession in the universe, and two, anybody who lives here knows it is almost impossible to get rid of anything, right? Like, we don't, we don't really have the luxury of, like, big trash day, like in some cities, where like, I'm getting rid of this couch, I just put it out on the curb and it's gone the next day. We really do have to rely on these junk haulers to come remove things for us. Yeah, these are, this is not like some massive multinational conglomerate of junk hauling, you know? It, it's not a big company, it's generally a guy who has a truck and is trying to make some money, so I would actually favor keeping that where it's at. Not only is it, yeah, I mean, not only is it a lu, not a lucrative profession, but also, it's a service people in this borough have to depend on if they want to get rid of stuff.
And you want to keep it at the one-fifty?
That's what I would suggest, but.
Um, and a point of clarification on that, that junk dealers ordinance, this is an annual fee for the junk dealer license, that's for the person that's actually removing the junk, it's not something that I have to get, if I want to remove junk from my house, I don't pay for that.
We're not charging you.
It's for the individual engaged in the
So, how many people are, are in our borough that are actually junk dealer licenses, would be my question, but I agree with
A few.
I would agree with Mr. Matt, just to leave it. It is a benefit to anyone who has ever had to move a lot of stuff out quickly. I would be okay with leaving it at the lower number.
How about one-seventy-five? No?
Uh, I do want
We're raising other fees, I'm just wondering, like, when was the last time this was raised, do you know?
I believe this one was 2015 as well. I don't remember it being raised, I've been here eleven years.
Okay.
And, can I go, are we going on? I have another question about
Did we settle it, where's, where do people want to see it?
I'm, I just, I think it should be at one-fifty.
One-fifty?
Is that where it was?
That was one-hundred.
One-hundred, one-fifty, I'll go with one-fifty, but not two-hundred.
Was it, it
Was it one-hundred or one-fifty?
Hard to read these, these
Yeah, it's hard to read
The lines through, like
Strike throughs are hard.
Yeah, so, it was a hundred? Or one-fifty?
It was one-fifty.
I think it was one-fifty.
Yeah, I would, one-fifty, leave it there?
I'd say, I'd say leave it at where it was.
So, why are we just saying this one doesn't have to get raised when all, we're raising the others, then?
Uh, because I would posit that this is a line of work that is held by folks with not a lot of other lucrative forms of income. I'm trying to be diplomatic here.
But I have another question on the junk dealers, as well. What if the junk dealer doesn't live in the borough, but they're coming to do the work in the borough?
They're still supposed to have a license.
They still have to get this, aha.
We, generally, this is one of our, I guess, more prevalent evasive activities that's happening. We, we do not necessarily have the capacity to regulate every instance of someone going on Craigslist or Facebook asking someone to haul trash.
I, I, that's the other thing, is like, how, how do we even know?
I don't know enough
See somebody moving, I'm going to call the code enforcement officer right now.
I mean, typically, do people who haul away trash or junk, do they turn around and sell it, like metal and things like this, can they not only get money from
Yeah, some metal can be recycled, but a lot of, a lot of stuff, like if you're getting rid of a couch, they're just driving it to York, to the transfer station where it's going to be incinerated, so. I mean, they're, they're, they're getting the, whatever you pay them to haul it off, that's what they make, less fuel.
I would, I would leave it.
Okay.
All right.
So, before you go on, back to the amusement ordinance, that is something that can be, how do I word this? We have, who is regulating, not regulating, who is making sure that those that need amusement ordinance, amusement license are getting the license? Is that code enforcement?
Yes, that is code enforcement, and with those, when we receive indication that there's either like a museum, an activity occurring or something, we will send out a notice just to inform them of the responsibility for being licensed.
Great, uh, we're seeing more and more of these little push-button machine gaming things convenience stores, bars, convenience stores, maybe even tobacco stores, I'm not sure. But, if they don't have the license, they need them. Thank you.
And some restaurants.
Do you want to take the licenses?
Certainly, so, um, yeah, so at this point, then, getting into the transient, transient retail business ordinance, this is, when we think of food trucks or other direct sales occurring in the public right-of-way, this is the licensure that enables that. Currently, it's set at a, you have a unique, we have a unique system, you have daily, monthly, and yearly rates. The request here is to up those rates ever, I mean, they're, they're going up a bit. So, the, currently, the daily transient retail business license fee is sixty dollars. The request here is to make that go up to seventy-five. With that, though, you do have other options that we, we really do not encourage these food trucks and such to go with the daily, we try, we really push the monthly and yearly. Monthly is currently set at two-hundred dollars, what we're asking for now is two-hundred-seventy-five, and then the yearly is currently six-hundred, the request is to increase that to eight-hundred-twenty dollars.
Uh, I think those are all reasonable, this is something we've talked about a lot, and I've have a somewhat unique experience in having operated a food truck here in the borough. I always was sort of shocked at how low the licensure is for transient food. It's a welcome, uh, low expense, because everything else is so precarious when you're operating that kind of business. But even still, the monthly and annual rates are, I think, very attainable. I think the reason people might favor the daily is because we have really severely limited people's ability to actually operate these businesses in the borough. We've really cut down on the number of places that, there's only a few places in the borough that are lucrative to put your vehicle, and then we also hold them to the same three-hour parking limitation as any other vehicle, even though no other vehicle is even though no other vehicle is filled with 400-degree cooking oil. And moving it every three hours is not quite the same as moving your car. Uh, we have actually made it really hard to operate one of these businesses. So while I think the, the fees are reasonable, the approach to regulating them has not been reasonable. But I think that's why you might see people leaning towards the dailies rather than the monthlies or annuals because the monthlies and annuals are, um, unpredictable expenses for them because they don't know when and where they can actually, uh, generate revenue. I'm okay with the increases though. Um, I think they're still relatively reasonable. And it is worth noting, this is the only type of business that we get any kind of licensure out of in the borough. Every brick and mortar business doesn't have to pay business licensure here, but these do.
But brick and mortar pays taxes though.
Sure. Sure.
Okay. Not hearing any other opposition to that. We'll move right on to, oh, yes, solicitors of contributions and gifts.
Yes, this is our solicitor's license. This is kind of runs in parallel with transient retail business. This is the solicitors that come to your door primarily. In Gettysburg, it's going to be your internet provider coming to ask you to get their internet service. Um, we do have a few other, um, generally, it's nonprofits, insurance agencies, and other, um, other requests. We do, when it comes to political candidacies and things like that, we, there's licensure is not required. Uh, but when it come, when it becomes these, uh, kind of more corporate solicitation, then the licensure allows for not only the individual, but, uh, the firm to have a license. So you can have multiple individuals with a little plaque, with a little lanyard, being able to go around and, um, ask people to either utilize their services or provide funds or whatever they may want.
Number 11, how do you feel about just eliminating it?
Eliminating it? No fee at all?
No fee for yard sales.
What do most other municipalities do, other communities?
I've not seen it. I mean...
Usually, the regulations as it relates to yard sales are an attempt to maintain, uh, control over the signage. Not necessarily, when it becomes a constant use, then you have a land use situation where you have a business operating in a residential zone. So i- it's not necessarily regulated on a licensure basis. The, um, borough itself, I mean, we're, we're collecting, I believe, in the $300 per year range. We do receive, yeah, generally, the complaints, we don't get complaints, we get, uh, calls from people who are rushed on Friday afternoon, who are under, uh, who were under the impression that they could have a yard sale without a license and are trying to go through the process of obtaining a license when all we really use the license for is to establish that someone's selling something somewhere and doesn't really provide too much information to the borough or provide a public health, safety, welfare.
Kill it dead.
I'm in favor of getting rid of the yard sales.
Sidewalk ordinance and, uh, sidewalk ordinance that can manage the signage that proliferates.
Yes.
Kill it.
Good call.
Go on. Look at that, like a big strike through. Make it red. All right. Not doing anything with horses, um, I don't think we made any changes to outdoor dining. Parking fees, we are proposing to leave status quo. Uh, with the exception of the RPP guest permits, they were really low. Uh, so, uh, we just, uh, suggest a modest increase for your three-day, five-day, and seven-day passes to 375, 425, and 575 respectively. Thoughts?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, under construction, that's just cleaning up some language. No fee changes there. Recycling. You want to take that one?
Yeah, um, oh, he's pulled it up. So the recycling, this is another one that hadn't been updated since 2015. Uh, I mean, we'd previously been at $50 for the permit. This is similar to, um, the junk, um, but this is related specifically to the recycling operations. Um, we do have, I want to say 13 providers with this one.
That sounds about right.
Is that annual?
Yes.
Okay.
And we, so with what we do, with all, with all of our permits, um, staff will go in, list of last year, we send them a notice two we, two months prior. We get some people that, that get them in early, but usually, we're still chasing down the recycling haulers. They're, they're tricky, but, um, we, we've had success.
Okay.
All right, moving on, um, no changes to street es- excavation fees. Uh, the right-to-know fees are set by another government level than us. So whatever those are, the state determines. And that should be it.
Okay. Any comments, questions about any of that? Anything sticking to anybody's craw? Well?
It's different than the amusement ordinance.
Yes, uh, yeah.
Because that's what Chad was referring to, the amusement devices.
One moment, please.
Oh, you mean like the slot machines? Yeah, that is different.
Sorry. That's okay. Uh, shall we, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was just brought to our attention. The, um, there was a discussion we had about, um, game, like the lottery slot, like video, video poker machines, things like that. Those are a different tax. Uh, so, so those are, we're starting to see those, especially in the gas stations and things like that. We, similar to the amusement device, we, it's similar, uh, I guess, a, a review occurs by code enforcement and we send them notification when we're aware that the machines exist.
But it is an amusement license. It falls under amusement license.
That's called, that's called mechanical device tax and apparently it's not, not listed. Yeah, so we'll have to add that.
I'm not sure, but Sean is at $25 for that. That's different than the amusement ordinance that you were asking about.
See, I thought it was included in amusement ordinance.
Yeah, that's two different words.
Like, I think, like, video games are included in the amusement license. Like, if you ran an arcade, I think that would count. But I think the gambling is, is in its own separate.
Uh-oh. Are you dead?
No, I got, I got battery.
Apparently, it's set by the general assembly. The PA, the mechanical device, so it's not us.
Hmm.
A scoop has lied to me.
I don't know what the fee is. I know that...
Is it regulated by if they charge or if it's free, or? We know.
Let's give the, them a moment to figure this out before we move on. It would be super cool to put the, uh, fee resolution to bed tonight.
Okay, so for amusement device tax, we charge currently a rate of $50 per device.
That's right.
And is this in the fee, fee resolution?
I'm checking to see if it's in our ordinance. Okay, so, um, section 24 dash 302, it provides that there shall be, that, okay, in which the device is installed or placed for use or play and shall be at a rate of $50 for each 12-month period beginning July 1st of each year and ending June 30th. So that one is in the ordinance.
In which ordinance?
So, uh, the amusement device tax is under taxation special, chapter 24, and then, yeah, section 302.
And that's why it's not in the fee resolution, because it's set by ordinance.
Great. That makes sense. That makes sense. All right, anything else on the fee resolution? Well, friends, we have a budget. Thank you all. I want to say, uh, I appreciate the format in which the information was presented to us this year. I realize that this was a big lift for you since our, um, accounting software is not providing the reports we would like. So thank you for doing that. I think it, uh, once we all got used to it, it was fairly readable. And I really want to extend gratitude to the entire staff for the work that they put in, uh, helping to create this budget and, um, represent their departments in this coming year. We will move to the... Sorry. That's everything, right?
Yep.
I'm done. We're done.
Yep.
We're done. All right, we will move to the second public comment section of the evening. Nothing, Mr. Rio? All right. Then, we turn to executive session.